Number two, approval on agenda.
Any changes, Your Honor?
Uh, never changes.
Motion to approve.
Second. All the roll. Okay, number two, approval on agenda.
Any changes, Your Honor?
Uh, no changes.
Motion to approve.
Second. All the roll.
McGinn.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Chick-fil-A.
Yes.
Sucker. Yes. Ray.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Okay, number three, presentation petitions and other communications. A, public hearing on the matter of the adoption of proposed amendment number one to the Boone Urban Revitalization Plan. Are there any written comments? The public comments. Nothing, this public hearing is closed. B, twenty-nine thirty-two, resolution adopting amendment number one, Boone Urban Revitalization Plan for the Boone Urban Revitalization Area.
Second.
All the roll.
Thanks.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Chick-fil-A.
Yep.
Sucker. Yes. Ray. Bird.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
They see, I'm made on annual tax increment financing. Uh, Maggie Booker.
Hi there, everybody. Thanks for having me. I hope you can hear me okay. We've got your TIF and debt report here. I remind you, the red pages are your general obligation debt outstanding. We've got the twenty thirteen, twenty fifteen, and the twenty twenty. And each much was issued, the issue date, as well as, um, the TIC. And the TIC is the True Interest Cost Associated. You have two bonds that are callable, the thirteen and the fifteen, which means you could pay those off early if you had the money to do so. You can just keep them out till maturity, but I do note that the interest rates on those are one point zero one and one point eight five. Uh, the two thousand and twenty bonds are your newest bonds. Those are not callable until we get to twenty twenty-six. We've drawn an underline under that amount, um, there for you. We give you the total principal, and on page two, we show you the different sources of revenue that the city has identified that they're going to pay this debt with. In the far right column, we've drawn an arrow to the amount that you will need to debt service levy for fiscal year twenty-three. And you can see that amount is about four hundred and four thousand. That's very similar to the amount that you levied in for fiscal year twenty-two that we're currently in. We have your revenue debt on the orange pages. The revenue debt that the city has outstanding as of now is the two thousand and twelve sewer revenue, uh, capital loan notes. There's just one more payment here in fiscal year twenty-two on that. Then you have the twenty twenty-one debt, and that was what we just did here this spring, in the May, in the month of May. And that refunded out a bunch of your existing sewer revenue debt. That interest rate is a one point one zero nine seven. That's why we did the refunding. Saved you a lot of money, but you would be able to pay off or pay early that last payment if you wanted to at the time. You do pay the majority of this debt, uh, or you do pay, I should say, some of this debt with sewer revenue, but you do pay a good majority of it with TIF revenue, um, as some of those projects were tied to TIF projects that you needed to do, um, to, to get you, uh, some better utility service. We, our purple pages are our rebate pages, and this is where we talk about any rebate obligations, the outstanding where the developer enters into an agreement, does something new, pays new taxes on it. You repay those, uh, you repay that portion of that taxes to them for a set number of years under the TIF law. You've got a couple, uh, you've got one in the South Boone Housing, which is the Tri-West Development. And then in the southeastern, uh, district, you have a Midland Power, a Boulders, and a TIF, uh, Senior One, Inc. So all of those rebates are outstanding. They are all subject to annual appropriation, which means only the annual amount of each of those agreements counts against your debt capacity, not the full aggregate amount, which is really good. That's what we like to see. Your yellow pages of your, this talks about out of the outstanding debt that you have, what is being paid with TIF revenues? The first two on the page are the twenty twenty bonds and the twenty thirteen bonds. A portion of each of those is being paid with TIF revenues into the general obligation debt service. So you're transferring those in. Then if we get further over on page one, this is where we start talking about the debt that is being paid with TIF that is related to sewer revenue debt issuances. We've got a small amount coming out of the West Central for the twelve, twelves and the twenty-ones. Excuse me, we also have the Southwest and the Southeast TIF District. Is getting some of that sewer revenue. We do bring in tax increment financing rebates in the purple column, and we draw an arrow to fiscal year twenty-three, meaning that you must certify approximately nine hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars to meet all of your TIF obligations in fiscal year twenty-three. And I remind you, those, uh, reports are due by December first. So I know Andrea will be working on those here. If they're not on your agenda this evening, they'll be on your agenda, I'm sure, in November. Uh, we go into our green pages, just a couple more things to run through. Column number two is fiscal year twenty-two. Uh, the city's actual valuation in Boone was seven hundred and seventy-six million, four hundred and nine thousand dollars. That gives you a statutory debt limit of thirty-eight million, eight hundred and twenty dollars, which is a number that has grown, uh, through the years. Um, and that's fantastic. You have general obligation bonds outstanding of four million, three hundred and fifteen thousand that count against your debt capacity, just the principal. No revenue bonds count against your debt capacity. You have annually appropriated rebates this year of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine fifty-five. You will pay back principal of seven hundred and twenty thousand with annual appropriation rebates of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand as well. So you have actually remaining debt capacity of thirty-five million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, or about ninety percent of your debt capacity remains. I know the council has talked about some different projects and explored some options of what may be a next financing for the city. I'm very confident that, you know, you have plenty of debt capacity, um, to just explore whatever those, uh, different projects are that you're looking at. We do deduct a twenty percent contingency here. That deduction is about twenty-seven, uh, is about seven million dollars. Again, meaning you should probably never issue more than eight, eighty percent of your debt capacity. That would still leave you with about twenty-seven million. It grow at about one point eight percent. We do add include a one percent growth for a couple of pages, just to show you how quickly you're out of debt. I'm gonna run through one section of the blue and then let you sort of look through the other sections on your own to conserve some of your time this evening. We're gonna start with the Southeast District on our blue pages and look at column two. Now, these blue pages represent any growth in your TIF district since inception, or since the time that you took those bonds, uh, or since this TIF districts. In commercial property in your Southeast District, you have sixty-two million dollars of growth or increment. Thirty-three million dollars of industrial growth, about a hundred and fifty-three million dollars of residential, and just over eight million dollars of multi-residential. We do take rollback on all of those, so the taxable increment is a hundred and seventy-nine million. We take that times your TIF tax rate of thirty-three dollars and fifty-five and we get about six million, twenty-three that you could collect taxes out of the Southeast District. You are collecting about a hundred and fifteen for debt purposes. You're collecting about three hundred and fifty-one thousand for some of those, uh, for some of that sewer revenue debt, and you are also collecting, um, some about a hundred and seven thousand. So you have unclaimed tip of about five million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand. I'm not gonna tell you that you should go be claiming all of that, because the increment that you're looking at, that you're not collecting on, that's increment that you haven't been collecting on. You've always just been meeting your obligations at about the same level each year. If you were to go grab more of, say, that five hundred, that five million dollars, you would be damaging your, uh, budget numbers, your valuation numbers, as well as the valuation numbers of this county and the school district. Means as you're starting to see good growth, um, you're allowing growth to come on. Uh, because that growth, that area is growing, you're asking for the same amount of receipts every year. You're letting some growth happen, um, amongst everybody. Just some, uh, words of some information going forward. You've got a Southwest District that has one obligation of revenue outstanding against it. Um, you've got the West Central District, um, which has, you know, is producing now enough increment, has enough increment to service the debt that was associated with West Central. And then also, you've got the South Boone Housing, which is really starting to come on. We're seeing some phenomenal growth there, um, which is tied directly to that rebate agreement. So, um, that still looks like it's in the negative. I, I wanna remind you, we always take the rollback. The county may not be taking all of the rollback, um, but you on that agreement, you know, can only, uh, rebate what is available, uh, to be rebated in, in that format. So with that, I would not, I don't wanna take up any more of your time, but I'd answer any questions that you have about any part of the report that I've, I've provided.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you all very much for having me electronically. I appreciate that.
And number four, reported standing events. Uh, A, Walt's administration, DJ.
No report. Oh, Steve, Steve. Yeah, one, I had a request from, uh, going down the street there itself, the northeast corner of Seventh Street Story, to temporarily, um, have some spots there on the east side of the road, north of Seventh Street Story, for their customers with Seventh Street to be closed. They have a lot of older customers that, uh, usually park in the back and walk out, but they can't do that. So they're just gonna put out that assigned to, not with that job, and during the daytime, business hour, and then and, uh, we did temporarily allow that, because we didn't get to it the last time, but I'm looking for approval for that to take place. Still in construction.
So, second. All the roll.
Norman?
Yes.
Chick-fil-A?
Yes.
Sucker? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Okay, utility committee, Steve. No report. Our next meeting, no, we thank you. Okay, excellent development committee, great.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Number one, I had someone contacting me on social media and asked if there had been any concerns or anything brought up about the downtown location from elected officials. I promised to bring that up before our public forum at seven. So I asked him to put this on the agenda, if there's any concerns brought to you, or do you have any concerns now that we have targeted the downtown location for the rec center project? No.
So I, I don't actually have a personal concern about that so much. I know some others have that concern, but, um, one thing that has come up in conversations is actually the date of the referendum. Being such a tight turnaround from, well, November first to March. Uh, I know originally when we went through the committee, we had a targeted general election date so that we wouldn't have to spend money for, uh, special election for people to participate, um, things like that. So I know, and, and also we give more time for a plan to be put together.
Yeah, um, it, for birds contacting me on social media with almost the exact same question. The concepts that we came up with and proposed was for a March first date, because if we wait to a general election date of November of twenty-twenty-two, we're looking at an entire wasted year, past demolition. That is an entire wasted year of grants, application, private fundraising dollars, working with downtown businesses in the meantime, which puts us back to a whole nother year of construction, because the grant application period closes, and then we're into winter. So if we wanna look at that, I'm open to it, but those are my concerns, and that's why we chose March one. And it's also from the community response we got from the school vote. I think it is completely doable for us to get the word out of why people need to vote one way or the other on the, on the referendum.
Through my campaign currently, I've had the same concerns expressed to me through downtown business owners that haven't been contacted or that the October fourth information was the first time that they had heard the information as well. So I'm, I'm not opposed to it either. I guess I was looking towards the information that would come forward tonight.
Which is why we're having public meetings, and, and we're scheduling November first vote for the referendum and the bond language. So we have December, January, February, March. And let's remember, we're also dealing with the whole city election process. We gotta give time for the people that are gonna be coming on, time to be part of the process as well. If we kick this to November of twenty-twenty-two, that is an entire year, we are talking and keeping the downtown spot vacant, but no progress whatsoever. And I'm asking elected officials in this room, if that is what they're wanting for the downtown efforts.
Well, another concern I have is
I, I am asking for that question first. So are there concerns about that timeline with that potential looking forward of an entire year wasted on the downtown revitalization?
One thing, one thing you need to take into consideration too is given the, the current inflation rate. If we push this off a year or a year and a half, we're looking at an additional one million dollars. If, if the inflation stays constant, stays the way it is. If it should accelerate, it may price us out of the market. That year is, is huge, uh, with construction costs the way they are.
The work done so far has been under the mandate unanimously supported by every elected official around this table of a downtown rec center at that location. If that has changed, please tell me now, because myself, council member Norman, and a whole bunch of people are gonna be going next door in forty-five minutes. So we need to have the discussion too.
Well, I have concerns with the date. I have concerns with looking forward on November first.
You have specific concerns of the timeframe we have laid out to, to work off the community information or
I have concerns that the community hasn't been able to fully represent themselves in the downtown community, able to come forward and that, that this is the right project for downtown.
So you do have concerns with the downtown project rec center?
Yes. With the timeline that you've laid out.
Okay, but that's, you're saying that downtown business owners have concerns of the downtown project at that location?
Yes.
Okay. Are you still focused on that downtown location?
Yeah, I'm open to the original location as well. I fully support a rec center, and I know that we need it. I don't know that the downtown is the right location.
Okay, so you do
I'm not a hundred percent.
Well, okay, again, I'm gonna ask this question, because when we purchased Six Twenty-eight Story Street, it was the mandate of council unanimously to focus on that location of the rec center concept as another city-owned property compared to the south side location, which the south side location had multiple issues as well concerning everything from parking to additional transportation costs to the south side location and the pushback we got as an elected official body of having another thing go to the south side versus the downtown location. If there's anybody that wants to talk about anything else, I, that's why we're having this conversation down in this community meeting. I was under the understanding that as elected officials, we were also focused on my downtown. That's what I understand too.
I mean, it's mine unless we got change of heart here, and now all of a sudden, no one's concerned about what happens downtown.
Okay, so
with the date too, I think it's really, you know, for being under the umbrella of the development committee, which will necessarily have two-thirds of its members being new to the committee, that's a very tight turnaround.
No. The only person stepping down is gonna be myself. Councilmember in, and potentially councilman Stecker will be involved in the process as well, correct?
January one is necessarily going to be two new councilmembers on it.
Necessarily?
Yes. As far as I know, councilmember Stecker's not running for
Who makes the appointments for the committee, since?
I don't understand what you're saying.
The mayor sets the appointments for the committees. If councilmember Stecker comes through the election process in her election attempt as mayor, she will necessarily be involved with the process, correct?
She won't be on the committee, but that's my point. There will be two new people on the committee.
She'll be moving five feet and sitting right there. So there, she'll be involved in the process as well. Again, there were, there were three people. Two of those three people are not here on the committee.
You said the committee and the process, and my point is that there is gonna be the process is looking like this, is that we are looking at a transition period of November, December, January, February, March.
I think it's
That provides how many months of community effort now to reach that we are gonna be talking about here?
I think it's too fast. That's my thing. Well, it's true, it's too fast too. Twenty-three million dollars, such a turnaround. I think it would have better representation if there were a full vote on the general election.
So you're looking to push back the downtown effort a full year?
I wanna do it right.
Okay, so now I'm hearing two oppositions to the downtown location and the November first vote.
Uh, I'm not necessarily a vote for the downtown position. I, I'm, I feel very strongly that a November general election date would be better, for better representation
Of the community at large.
The vote, yes.
Did you vote for the school bond vote that had the exact same process included?
I don't know the turnout percentage was for that.
Did you vote for the school vote with the exact same process that I recommended, along with councilmember Norman and city staff?
I wasn't in charge of creating
Were you voting, and did you vote in the process for the school bond vote that followed this exact same process? So my question to you, councilmember Stein, is was that process good enough for you to vote for twenty-three million dollar rec center? But you as an elected official for the city of Boone for a ten million dollar rec center downtown, that is the keystone of downtown revitalization that we are talking about here for months?
There's no need to get angry.
Oh, you have not seen the anger yet.
All I'm saying is I'm probably a more school voter than men, and more people go to the polls in November.
Yes, in a general election, they do.
Yes, and that will be on the general election ballot?
Again, my question's still unanswered.
It's
An entire year.
It's not relevant, I'm not going to answer.
It's not relevant that we wait an entire year on downtown revitalization?
Whether I'm voting for the school board, school bond or not, that's not relevant.
When they follow the exact same process, and then you were fine as a taxpayer and a local resident in that process to vote yea or nay. I'm not asking if you voted or not, but you were comfortable to vote in that process. Now that we are talking about downtown revitalization, you're fine waiting a whole nother year because you aren't comfortable with the concept now for the city project.
Not concept, I, I wanna make that word still clear. I said that
The voting concept, the voting proposal that we are bringing forward.
I think it would give more time for a plan to be presented to the people, not the bottom, and there would be better participation, and we would not have to pay for a bond vote. And also, if there were any costs that we're anticipating, you could build that into the twenty-twenty-three budget.
Okay, so again, our timeline that we propose now is building those proposal costs into our next fiscal year budget.
So that's my thing.
But you're willing to spend an additional seven hundred and fifty to a million dollars, wait a year?
I don't know that it's going to be that. I just wanna do it right. That's my thing.
The current, the current inflation rate is five point four percent. Do the math. You're a math professor, do the math. What will it be?
But I think it's
On ten million dollars, on, on
if this
I'm sorry, I'm not speaking to you, however. Do the math, if you feel like, what would it be? On ten million dollars, if we wait two years to get it built? Because that's what we're gonna do. It's bad enough we're gonna have to wait a year, now we're gonna have to wait two. It's over a million dollars now.
Look, sorry, hey, that's fine. I'm just one vote, I'm just one person, and it's my opinion, and that is what I've been hearing from people as they've been going around. So
Who?
From constituents, people that I talk to.
The constituents I'm hearing from? And I guarantee you, I'm getting more negative pushback than any one of you in this room on this concept. It's been, people are hungry for this. And I'm not saying it's not gonna be hard, and I'm not saying it's gonna be easy. I'm saying we can do this, and we can bring back the downtown that everyone says is a top priority for the community. I am gonna be gone from this chair in three months. I am one voice in this conversation, as we are councilmembers, but I can't prepare to tell you, if we push this back, I'm gonna be sitting in those rows of seats right there, asking why I'm looking at a hole in my downtown instead of a work being done on it like it was promised by the elected officials around this table.
Well, let's make sure that what we're building is the right thing, and it's done the right way.
What specifically do you have concerns with the current concept or ideas?
That there could be something potentially that earns more money sitting there.
I'm asked, so you're talking about putting something else in that downtown location, then?
That's what I've been saying, yes. That is the right thing to sit there.
The right thing to sit there for an entire year?
No, building the right building, building the right concept.
Okay, again, I bring back the conversation of, we had this talk when we purchased Six Twenty-eight Story Street.
Yes, and it was hypothetical, and that the wellness center was going there.
It was hypothetical, and so we got through the demolition process, but the intent was unanimous, and there was no anybody to voice concerns of us looking otherwise at the rec center concept, except for the downtown, because of the benefits abroad downtown of the foot traffic and the extra dollars to the downtown area. And now you're telling me now you have an issue with it after we've gone through three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for demolition of the building, another hundred and fifty thousand for the purchase of the building, and months of wasted work on grants and everything else and research?
So when you say concepts, are you, are you, are you insinuating that you would be able to do a look at some different filter direction?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's not what we agreed on. When we were reporting, that's not what we agreed on. I'm, I'm just saying that we had a, a decision that we kind of made here as a council, we started that whole city ten months ago. And I'm here to tell you, if you don't wanna have this vote coming up in March, and you wanna wait two years, then I'm telling you what, you're probably gonna lose me altogether, the whole damn thing. Because we got thirty-seven million dollars for the capital improvement projects for this city, and it's pretty important instead of head projects for people. And if we wanna give the people the rec, a rec center, they wanna vote for it, yes, then we'll give them the damn thing. But we're not gonna wait another year. And I don't know what crap started here between now, all of a sudden, oh, no, now we don't want it down there. It's all a bunch of election garbage. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But this is all a bunch of poo. Either make a damn decision as a council, move forward with it, or just forget the whole thing. So if it goes past March, I'll be against it all the way.
I get that we've had this information since October fourth.
You've had this information, you guys have talked about this thing for a year.
That's a march vote.
No, we've talked about this thing for a year, then the pandemic threw it out. And then we sat there for another year. And now we're back here again with some other agenda that's applied here, and it's just ridiculous.
The reason you're
Your guests are just being phonies to the public.
The reason we are suggesting October fourth and coming back November first was just as we, as I described, and councilmember Norman described on that date. The October fourth to November first gives us thirty days of community input. If the community input you are giving is like this, you need to tell them to come and stand up and tell us as a, as a body, because I am not hearing this from the community at large. What I'm hearing from the community at large, like I said, is a hunger for this project, you've gone for the downtown. There are concerns, I'm answering them, I'm telling them information, the same information every one of us got October fourth. Now, thirty days of input, a community meeting tonight, and thirty-three minutes. We vote on the bond language for the project and valid information that we have for thirty days to digest and give to the public, and then November, December, January, February, to work this process through. And you're telling me that is not enough time to educate the people of Boone on what this project can entail? For them to make an informed decision of this project as a community as a whole?
I, I think it would be better to wait till November, but that's just my thing. And I'm not saying that I'm gonna go down the line, I'm gonna come up, I'm just saying that that's, that what the general feeling is, with a lot of people that I've talked to, and so I'm gonna try not to work to the table.
Well, understand one thing about this, is we're not reinventing the wheel. The work that the prior Wellness Center Committee did is being used for this project, and the only thing that has changed basically is the location and some of the services that we're gonna offer. Otherwise, nothing's changed. The rates haven't changed, the amenities haven't changed, we're gonna discuss that tonight. That, that has changed, hasn't changed. The information that we gathered as a committee is being used. Why are, why, why, why do we have to reinvent the wheel? Why do we have to go back to square one when we have all this data to use? I just, I, it's counterproductive. And putting this off another year is gonna cost the city and the taxpayers a lot of money. Way more money than a special election is going to cost.
And I, I will point out the special election costs that are concerned about and have a voice tonight palely comparison to probably what we're going to have to spend to go back to square one as Ed is being introduced tonight. The thousands of dollars that were already spent prior to this effort to go back to square one. Is that what we're asking tonight?
I'm not asking because of that. If you ask if anyone has concerns, I'm sharing my concerns.
You're sharing your concerns, but I'm not giving a lot of reasons other than you feel the process is rushed even after explaining the timeline. And, and you do feel that there's interest in looking at another option for that downtown location, and that you're not settled on the downtown location of the rec center. We potentially should look at the south side again. Those are all the reasons you've given me tonight. Are those all valid? Okay. Councilmember Stecker is not in support of the current effort of a March 1st bond vote? And if there's any other concerns that I need to know about before I go next door and speak to the public at large? All right.
Good, thank you.
Item number two, update on Spoon CBB. November 1st. CBB executive director Chris Block will be here giving us an update on their upcoming proposals for marketing 2022 for the community, also on efforts that have been done since the chamber and CBB agreement's been finalized and anything that's been getting done here in the, in the following winter of this year. And also, too, something that council member Mormon brought to my attention and asked us to consider, she'll be giving us a presentation on, to the council as a whole, of coming up with a community email list. So she is going to be bringing forward a proposal for us to work where items of city interests and city news and city discussions and stuff get sent out on a general email list like we do with our committee list. Get some more information out to the community as a whole that way. So that way, we can also facilitate the rec center discussion, excuse me, and then also to all any other information, upcoming meetings and information to the public at large. I think we all know that 40% of the community is on Facebook, the other 60% listen to everything at Dutch Up. Just get the community involved. And then that way, we have more discussion and more input from the community as a whole.
And if the council thinks that's a good idea, it's set up this email database. You know, I don't have that available tonight, but starting at our next community meeting, we'll acquire email from people, and that way they can get interviews.
Yeah.
Especially with the community meetings. That way we can do a blanket email. Anybody that's interested can get us their email, and we can do that.
Yeah, it'd be like our initial list. It'd be just a general list that it would have, send out information for city news, and then also, too, it helps us you know, get some more feedback that way as well, so people can send us
And if we have PowerPoints like we have tonight or any other kind of information, we can attach that to the email, and they'll have it at their fingertips.
It would not be immediate. Chris is bringing the information to us and what she's proposing so we can build it into the next fiscal year on the budget if there is a cost associated with it. That's it, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number five, Department of Forest Building officials.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, in your packets, we have a site and stormwater plan for the Boone future and homeschool building. It's going to be constructed for native Boone people on the old Weepat site, 215 West Eighth Street. It's 58,000 square foot building. In the, in the center of the building will be kind of a multipurpose room. It's basically a half gymnasium that will be used for practice facilities for the high school and, and other possibly middle school as well. I'm not sure, but they will not be holding events there. They'll just be a practice facility where they were, used that, that site as a deck for practice facility. Then the, the homeschool and the futures building through the future area will be basically divided by that, that center area right there, the multipurpose room. Got 66 parking spaces, which is well over what they're required to have, so they're out, but they're. One of the big things that planning zoning had a long discussion on is that, look, the site plan, there's no sidewalk on Ninth Street. There is on Eighth Street. The planning zoning did finally make a decision that they did want to see sidewalks on that Ninth Street side. We had that discussion here recently about sidewalks. So with that, staff, planning, zoning recommended approved site plan with the sidewalk on Ninth Street.
Second, call the roll.
Yes. Sucker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Okay, next up, finance officer, Greg. See, it's Ernie Jim.
If you recall, Boone County, the city of Boone, on the Orange District, 137, which I carried out the other day, essentially, I hear, that case is set for trial July 13th of next year. Thank you.
Director of Work, Don Ross, get you on a couple of items. South Porch Street project, your latest start today. Starting with the mantle that's in West Park Avenue, on Park Avenue. They got a revised mantle, and so that is underway, so this is FYI. Demo's going good over here at the 628th story. We started with piles, got into the parking lot. Six, on Eighth and Story, the green space. If I remember correctly, we are done with Thursday's party, so I can get the kai go out and take the bicycle fencing on the barricade back to my shop, correct? Okay, so that's what I'll do more, more, right sometime soon. Okay, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. City engineer, or public safety chief, Adams.
No report, Your Honor.
Uh, chief people.
No report, Your Honor.
City minister, Bell.
Thank you, sir. So it's that time again for the capital improvement program that we do that's, as you know, projects that are five years out. We institute them into our budget for fiscal 23 to fiscal year 27. There's a CIP, CIP committee that consists of staff, councilman Norman and councilman Bird, and Jim Turvis. I've talked with them all. We're planning on having our meeting on Friday, November 19th from 9:00 to noon. And then shortly after that, when the committee goes through that, we'll prepare all that for council. Okay, other, or my other item I want to talk about tonight is the mayor and I had a very productive meeting today with Fairway. Been talking with them about being a partner for us, with us in the Wellness Center. The meeting went well. I don't have any details at this point, but we're still working on it, but it was a very good one. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number six, consent agenda. Any, any other consent agenda you want to remove and discuss separately? I didn't want to think of others in the minutes previous meeting. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Sucker? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Pickla?
Yes.
Item subordinates, A, second reading ordinance 2270 to make adjustments to the residency requirements set forth in section 5.13 as related to city employees and officials.
Motion to approve. Call the roll.
Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Pickla?
Yes.
Sucker?
Yes.
Okay, B, first reading ordinance 2271, amended ordinance number 2170, designated Boone urban revitalization area for the Boone urban revitalization plan for the city of Boone, Iowa, amendment number one.
Motion to approve. Second, call the roll.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Pickla?
Yes.
Sucker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Okay, number eight, I have no comments. CD number nine, any council member comments?
Uh, one quick thing, if you've noticed the parking ramps going down pretty quick.
Yeah.
She's about a third down, so it's not going to take long. By the end of the week, she should be pretty much gone. Pretty quick. Their, their timeline, when we had the progress meeting, they thought they would be, I think we have a meeting for the sledding hill Wednesday, right? Thursday. They think they're going to be backfilling by the first week in November. If they are backfilling by the first week in November, that sledding hill may be available. So we're hoping anyway, right?
Perfect. So everybody
Any other council comments? The public comments, Brian's not on the agenda. Anything, Justin? Okay, if that idea of motion going to close session is often authorized by chapter 20, section 20.173, as amended the code, I'll propose city council to discuss strategy as to collect and barbeau with the police unit.